We will come to order. It is Monday, January the 23rd, 2023, at 9:00 in the morning. Kerr County Commissioners Court is now in session. I want to advise everybody at home that we do not. YouTube is audio only today. There's something wrong with our camera, so you're not going to be able to see everyone, but you'll be able to hear all the proceedings.
Well, darn, I comb my hair.
Yeah.
For nothing.
You're a radio man anyway.
So if you would, please rise for the prayer and the pledge, which will be led by Commissioner Paces.
Heavenly Father, bless this gathering as we work for the people of Kerr County. Guide us in our deliberations as you did our founding fathers and grant us the wisdom to see the truth and make the best decisions for our constituents. Lord, many of our residents are suffering from this drought, so please grant us the gift of gentle rain in enough quantity to recharge our aquifers and end this drought. Keep our first responders safe and guard and protect our children. We thank you for the beauty of the Hill Country and the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. I want to remind everyone to please turn, and I'm doing it myself right now, silence your phones or either turn them off, so you don't interrupt the proceedings. And we start Commissioner, regular Commissioner Court meetings with a, our public input. We ask that you go to the podium, identify yourself and, and at least which precinct you live in, and limit your remarks to no more than three minutes. I know we've got one person who's asked to speak, and that's Mr. Sandy. Jim, you want to go to the podium? Start with you.
Good morning. I'm Jim Sandy. I live in Precinct 2. I'm here to address the elephant in the room concerning public safety. Everyone loves entertainment when it's safe, but when the entertainment involves big, powerful machines, things can go disastrously wrong. I still vividly remember the sad news about the recent drag racing tragedy at our local airport. A car went out of control, slamming into the crowd, resulting in deaths and injuries. The organizers of the event told this court that they had a very, very good safety plan. Unfortunately, even though accidents may be rare, the consequences of such an accident are unacceptable. I suspect that this court will never allow another drag racing event to be held at the airport. The risk of a similar type of accident occurs each time the Carden Circus is allowed to perform at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. These performances include the use of elephants, which are very powerful animals, weighing about twice as much as the average car, standing about nine feet tall at the shoulders and having a body length of about 20 feet. Think of the elephant as a large car, but with a mind of its own. Circus elephants have sometimes gone out of control, slamming into the crowd, resulting in deaths and injuries. For example, when the circus elephant went for a circuit in Honolulu, telling the injuring people, it broke out of the event arena and went on a 30-minute rampage through the city before police finally brought it down. Over the course of the rampage, the elephant was shot 86 times. I will submit to the court a list of 31 similar incidents involving circus elephants over a 20-year period, all documented in the news. Note that the Carden elephants are under a lot of stress, due in part to frequent travel in small transport containers. Recently, the Carden Circus performed in 24 cities over a 59-day period. That's almost three different cities per week. That sort of travel stress is bound to put an elephant on edge, primed to explode at an unexpected sound or sight. This court can avoid the corresponding risk of death and injury by not allowing the Carden Circus to use the event center in the future. Jake Williamson informed me that the Carden Circus has not yet booked an event at the youth center for 2023. The revenue generated by the Carden Circus, which was $2,300 in 2021, is not worth the risk of death and injuries. I am asking in the court to please take action before another tragedy occurs. Let me get some handouts. Here's five handouts for the commissioners and one for the official court record.
Thank you.
We gotta sit down, Jim.
Can you shut up?
No, you don't have to shut up. Anyone else that has any public input for the court here? Very well, then we'll move on to Commissioner's comments. We usually start with Precinct 1, but I'll give you a reprieve today, and we'll switch over and start with Ford.
Gosh, I don't have a whole lot, other than as Rich said in the beginning in his prayer, that we need some rain, and I think we've got a shot, but we need more than this on the horizon than I think we'll be able to see tomorrow. That's all.
I'd like to get a brief update, in addition to the needing of the rain, of course, but we, Reagan, myself, Peter Lewis, Kelly, we all met last week and went over the kind of the site plans, the animal control facility, and how to do it, and how, kind of, good brainstorming sessions. I visited with Karen Guerrero as well, about that, you know, kind of where we're going and the schedule. Peter's in the process of coming up with some, three or four different designs that we'll be looking at, as to how everything kind of moved a little bit, shifting things around, trying to figure out how we can save some money on the entrance to the facility, and at the same time, looking at the fact that we can't use any of the bond money for road and bridge or any other use out there. So it kind of limits things a little bit. Anyway, that's kind of all update that's going forward. And it'll be coming to the court probably before long, and it'll be included with the contract with Peter Lewis. And there'll be some engineering required on the floodplain areas. So, anyway, that's all progressing.
Okay. Precinct 2?
Yeah, just a reminder, as it's already been noted, but our burn ban is in effect for all precincts. And along the lines, last week, the Center Point Volunteer Fire Department responded to a late-night brush fire off Banderas Highway. And the problem I want to raise and make the public aware is, hey, we had a little difficulty finding the correct address and the gate. So I just want to remind the public how important it is to have good address signs, you know, the little blue and white reflective things? And they should be posted near your gate in a manner that makes it highly visible from the road for emergency responders. Keep in mind that when it comes to a fire or other emergency, minutes matter. And I found out with a little visit to Kerr Emergency 911 Network, you can buy those little signs for nine bucks a pop. So, and they are located in Shriner Center at 819 Water Street, Suite 270. So check your signage. The other thing, just to keep everyone aware, spending a lot of time on the Center Point Sewer System project, both in review-type meetings and also in site inspections. I have received a lot of calls about the poor condition of the roads where Dee Guerrero has been working, and the temporary repairs have been inadequate, so we're pushing them to step up these repairs with priorities, at least in Precinct 2, being Boxwood and Stone Lee, and some progress has been made with cold mix in Boxwood, and hopefully they'll get to Stone Lee this week. We're looking for a good warm weather window to apply hot mix to permanently repair these roads, and also looking at our options under our contracts to apply more pressure, or even if necessary, take over road repairs and backcharge Dee Guerrero. That's it.
Okay. What?
Nothing to report.
Good. Then we'll move on to the consideration agenda. Item 1.1, consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the 2022 Kerr County Historical Commission Report. Ms. Leonard? And do I understand this is your final report?
Yes. Yes. Nice, long form.
We want to, we want to give you a warm welcome your last time.
Good morning. This is my final presentation to the court as Chair of the Kerr County Historical Commission. I'd like to thank the court for your support during my 15 years of service, and the only commissioner that has been here as long as I have served is Commissioner Lenz. So appreciate all your support. I joined the Kerr County Historical Commission in 2007. This, the commission was formed 48 years ago in October 1975 with nine members. We now have 63 members. When I moved here in 2007, we built a home on our family land. I was invited to join the commission and was very flattered, not knowing that the following year I would be suddenly thrust into the leading the commission. So it's been a real wonderful experience and very educational. I made a lot of friends. I, I'm really grateful for the experience. I like Claire Bell Snodgrass, I know Jonathan knew her. She counseled me until she was 103 years old, and I listened. Also, historian Mike Bowlen and many others helped me along the way, had great support in the commission. This past year, our members volunteered 4,967 hours to promote and preserve Kerr County history with the following projects. And Bunny, I don't think I ever got your hours. So we could probably add another 500 to that. So anyway, our, this past year, our projects were, we had a six-week, 1940 to 1960 historic photo exhibit at the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center. We had a week-long Union Church building was used for summer history camp. It was attended by 20 fourth and fifth graders, and there were 10 of our group's daily staffers, plus some other volunteers. The programs were the UGRA data program on the Wadleyby River and about the floods, conservation, and the watershed. And the next day, the Daughters of the Republic of Texas taught the kids sewing, making butter, identifying animal pelts, and believe it or not, they said that the boys were the best ones at sewing, so that was pretty interesting. Member Clifton Pfeifer did cowboy songs and stories. The former Texas Rangers inducted the kids into the Junior Texas Ranger Program. Stan Kavinka did a great program on all the flags, Texas flags, the different flags that are flown over the state. And Julia Steinhauffer did a program on farm and ranch equipment, and each presented the daily program. And the last day, buzzy keys of buzzies donated the end-of-camp chili latch. And we're also, the camp is scheduled again for this June, and Bunny, I, what were the dates? Like the second week, I believe? First full weekend, yeah. Okay. Also, we have received an untold story, okay, I'm getting ahead of myself. We dedicated the 91st Kerr County Historical Marker for the 103-year-old Garrett Insurance Agency. We have added 22 historical markers while I've been chair. We also received an untold story, Texas Historical Marker for the Gate of Texas Cemetery on the grounds of the Kerrville State Hospital. It was a cemetery for African-Americans that died of tuberculosis at the hospital, and we have not received that marker yet, but it should be installed sometime this year. We also donated Kerrville Downtown Walking Turbo Shirts to the 300 Texas Archaeological Field School attendees in June, and member Julia Steinhauffer allowed attendees to excavate a site on this ranch. The Kerr County Historical Commission creates photo and historical information on display cases at the main Kerr House entry, and they are changed periodically during the year. Kerr County Historical Commission is one of 473 partners to the Portal of Texas website, and we've received a mini-grant for the seventh year, this, this last year. This program, we started in 2015. There are 132 oral histories on the site, and we are the only partner that submits oral history in video format. And there are many Kerr County books, booklets, histories on the site, and they can easily be accessible by the public. We have a huge presence on that site. We have 946 members on the Kerr County Historical Commission Facebook page. We post our meetings on that. Members have photos, interesting stories about area families, school events. And there also are six members on the Heart of the Hills Heritage Center Board, and their charter requires one member of the Texas EAC to be on the board. Kerr County Cemeteries have been identified, researched, and added to the Kerr County Clerk's Office and the Texas Historical Commission Cemetery Preservation Division. And really, we're really sad because Cherry Farley was our chair, and she is leaving Houston, so we have a really a vacancy that we're sad, and we hope somebody will step up and take that, that chairmanship. We have, I was notified, we have 15 reported Texas landmark historical buildings for a photograph and sent to the Texas Historical Commission Atlas Division to add current photos on their website. They have all the historical commissions in the state, I mean, the markers exist on their page, so we did some photographs of ours to make their, their sign. In 2022, Tommy High School Media Studies had assisted filming and transcribing the oral histories of former Kerrville Mayor Bill Blackburn, Linda Gibson, Lear Lavon, and Louis Sanchez. So that, that program has started up again. We're very happy about that. We also, we meet at the Union Church Building January through May and September to November, the third Monday of the month, at 12:00 noon. The programs presented this in 2022 with Antique, Antique Quilt Collection and Their Pair, Cowboy Songs and Stories, Clifton Pfeifer, How to Document Your Property for the Texas Historical Commission Family Land Heritage Program, Joshua D. Brown, founder of Kerrville, and incidentally, Kerrville was created January 26, 1856. In three days, we'll be celebrating that. And also, this is interesting, his son, AP Brown, was a Kerr County Commissioner in 1935 and to 1936. The commission has continually received the THC Distinguished Service Award for the past 15 years and the years before, so we have an exceptional record with getting the Distinguished Service Award. And it's been really my pleasure to serve Kerr County, and during my years of service to the Kerr County Historical Commission, I think we have fulfilled our mission, which is to protect and promote Kerr County's historic and cultural resources for the youth, education, enjoyment, and appreciation for present and future generation. There's work to be done, and unconvinced this court will continue to support the important work of the Kerr County Historical Commission. Respectfully submitted, and thank you.
Well, we want to thank you for your 15 years of service.
Julia, I really want to thank you. I mean, I really appreciate it. You've done a fantastic job all these years. And, you know, I think Julia is around a far better place.
She may not be that big, but those are big shoes you got to fill.
She's going to be in good hands.
Moving on to the next agenda item, which is 1.2. Consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request from the leadership Kerr County to use Flat Rock Park from Thursday, April 6th through Sunday, April 9th for the 2023 Easter Fest event.
Judge, don't we have to accept that report? Do we accept the historical report?
I thought we did.
I think we did.
We, we have in the past.
Is there a motion to accept?
I move we accept the report and proceed from the second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the report presented by the Kerr County Historical Commission. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Companion?
Hello. How are you? So, yes, we're Leadership Kerr Chem, class of 37, best class ever, and we are requesting the use of Flat Rock Creek, and from April 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th, but only the 8th will it be closed to general public. That's just for tents and for the chili cook-off and all of that. Our charities that we will be supporting this time will be K-Star and Mercy Gate for our class, and we're requesting permission to use the park, the mass gathering permit, and a letter for selling alcohol.
Well, that's going to be the next, that's the next agenda item.
Yeah.
This one is for use of the park.
Okay.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve use of Flat Rock Park from Thursday, April 6th to April 9th for Easter Fest this year. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Then item 1.3 is to consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request to authorize the county judge to prepare a letter approving the sale of alcohol at Easter Fest being held at Flat Rock Park on April the 8th. The letter to be sent to the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission. You may proceed.
Okay.
We got to, you got to have our permission to do it.
Okay. Well, we would like to request that permission.
I move for approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the sale of alcohol for Easter Fest this year. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. You didn't introduce your companion.
Oh, I'm so sorry. This is, I'm just talking to you via no available.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 1.4. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to appoint a member of Commissioners Court or designate a person to perform the investigation under Section 751.005 of the Texas Health and Safety Code for the purpose of determining if the minimum standards for ensuring public safety and order, as prescribed by law, will be maintained under the application for permit for the mass gathering for Easter Fest on April the 8th at Flat Rock Park.
I move to appoint Rich Paces.
Yeah, I second that.
Got a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Paces to do the investigation for the mass gathering permit? And for those of you that don't know, the reason we laugh about it is, the new guy on the court always gets it. So it's your turn.
I'm going to abstain then. I voted myself into this.
Lucky didn't need third.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye.
401. Item 1.5, consider discuss and take appropriate action on a request from the UGRA to use Flat Rock Park for the UGRA Annual River Cleanup to be held on July 22nd from 7:00 in the morning to 1:00 PM. Tara, and you want to introduce?
Yes, sir, I will. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Tara Bushing with the Bergwog Loopy River Authority, and we're excited to, already have started planning for our annual river cleanup for 2023. I wanted to introduce UGRA Natural Resources Specialist Matthew Wilkinson, who's heading up the event for us this year, and he'll tell you a little bit about our things.
Hello, Judge, Commissioners. As you said, I'm Matthew Wilkinson. I'm a natural resources specialist at UGRA, and this year is going to be the 20th Annual River Cleanup, and we would very much like to use Flat Rock Park again. It's been a great venue for the event. This is my second river cleanup, but from what I've heard, it's been great over there at Flat Rock. So volunteers are going to sign up, oh, and it's going to be on July 22nd this year, the fourth Saturday in July. Volunteers will coordinate with them, they'll go out throughout the county, picking up trash, and then they'll bring it all back to Flat Rock Park. While they do go out throughout the county, that's kind of our headquarters area, and the area near the boat ramp is where we'll typically, you know, set up for the recycling dumpster, as well as the trash, and then coordinate with the city for them to come pick it up that day and haul it off. It's been a really great event. Last year, like I said, was my first event. I really enjoyed it. We anticipate having 400, 500 volunteers this next year. We're starting to get our number back up after the hiatus of COVID restriction. And yeah, last year, we did just above 6,000 pounds of trash and recycled metal, so we're hoping to get that number up as well with volunteer numbers. So yeah, we would very much like to use Flat Rock Park again for the event.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the use of Flat Rock Park for the UGRA Annual River Cleanup on July 22nd. Any discussion?
Quick comment, I mean, this is a great project, and I mean, there's a phenomenal amount of cleaning up the river, and I had talked to UGRA for tackling this every year. And also, just an interesting thing, those that don't ever go to over to UGRA, I'd encourage them, for no other reason, is to look at the art. They make, the kids make art out of the trash, and I guess the sculptures are still there, Tara?
Yes, they're there for me.
So it's interesting what the kids come up with and with how they do things, and it's, it's something worth seeing.
Yeah. The partnership with the Hill Country Arts Foundation during their summer camp is how we'll be following the river cleanup, and they'll take some of the items and make a collaborative piece that we keep permanently in our landscaping. So yes, thank you for inviting me if you want to see.
Deal.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.6, consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the qualitative incentives for the 2022 Per Global Spectrum LP Management Agreement with the Hill Country Youth Event Center. Jake?
I just leave on here for questions. Right. I'll probably just take the lead on this, and this is the, this year, Don was there when I met with Jake, and we kind of went over where we thought the incentives should be since Don's going to be the liaison for the Kerr County Event Center moving forward. But what this is, it's budgeted every year up to $15,000. It's, money's already there, so it's not additional. And basically, the way it's worked in the past is that Jake and I, and this year with Don included, we go through the qualitative incentives and determine how much of the those five categories, up to $3,000 can be provided or granted for each one. And I'll go over and just tell you what the, my recommendation is, customer service Originally, when we started this, you know, and Jake still does, he sends out questionnaires, but he gets very few responses as back as to how he's doing, but he does get a lot of comments, and everything I always hear is very positive. The, I recommend that he gets a real $2,000 of the $3,000 as possible, and the reason for not giving it higher is there is some back and forth between 4H and use of the facility. And just want to, you know, encourage that, keep that communication open, talk to, with the, it's Michael, right? Michael, over at Extension.
Mike Morris. In fact, Jake and I met with Mike on Thursday or Friday, and just, you know, Mike just came on board the ninth of the month, and he's already running ragged with stock shows here, there, and yonder, and he was going to be on Friday, so I got Jake over there, introduced them to each other, and we kind of addressed some of those, the history of it, and what we expect out of Jake. And then, of course, I basically told him that, told Mike that, you know, we expect him to make money on the event center out there and everything, but we do tie one hand behind his back in allowing all our youth to use it, and that's what that facility was designated for to begin with. And so I think they're also a good start.
The second qualitative incentive is quality of food and beverage. Last year, court awarded 500 points of, or $500 of the $3,000, mainly because there's not a whole lot of food and beverage they can do out there. This year, I recommend they go up to 1,000 on that, because they spent a lot of effort and time getting the liquor license for that facility, and they're also working with the, the public on, kind of, all alcohol now has to be purchased through Spectrum, and by the same time, being fair to the, the people that use that facility and rent the facility, and it's a change, and that's being transitioned in, but that was a big undertaking to get that TABC permit.
Does that, that means that if I wanted to run the event, I give the Spectrum how much I, I want to serve, and they?
They provide it, they have to, they have, you cannot bring it in on your own anymore. But Jake is, you know, I won't go into how much he's charging, because I don't, it varies from event to event, but you know, and that's the standard. Well, usually, there's a pretty high markup, but Jake's trying to be reasonable, because people are used to bringing in their own in the past. Repairs and maintenance, last year, I believe we awarded 2,500, and I recommend the same this year. That facility is always spotless whenever I'm out there, and does a very good job on that. Creative sales and marketing, and I recommend, last year's 2,500, and I recommend the same this year. And on that, there will be coming to the court soon, a, the sign out there is broken much of the time, if not all the time, and we're, Jake's coming up with a new sign, which we believe we have to we believe we have the funding for already, out of, out of our contract, for the majority of it anyway. And we're looking at going with a, the digital sign similar to what's at Amherst Stadium that the Tiger Athletic Booster Club has. So that'll be a big improvement out there. And then on control of operating expenses, last year, I believe we did 2,500, and I did the same this year. Jake does a really good job every year of looking at the budget and making adjustments with staffing and stuff like that, and other controllable expenses to make sure he's in line with the budget that we've approved. So out of that total, that total comes to $11,500 out of the $15,000, is what I recommend. Any other comment?
No, I, I think that's right in line with what we're doing, and, you know, Jake was there when we kinda went over everything and, and thought this, these numbers out. I think he's agreeable to you, I think.
And so, but I move, I move.
How, how did we get to 11,500? The first one was one, wasn't it?
No, two, 2,000.
Two, one?
One.
Two and a half, two and a half, two and a half. Right?
That's seven.
Yeah, I got 10,500.
10,500?
Oh, 10,500, sorry.
Well, I still move for approval. And that's good news, if we saved $1,000.
I second.
So we've got a motion and a second? Yeah. That's, we've got a motion and a second, now we're gonna have a discussion. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, jumping out. No.
My question is, do we also have a, I'm the new guy, right? So do we have a quantitative way to judge the performance out there, or is it all just qualitative?
Qualitative, it's in the contract.
Okay.
Now, under the...
I'm an advocate of quantitative to the extent possible. I'm not saying we shouldn't have qualitative.
Right. The, the only one that has actual criteria is, that is quantitative, is the results of customer service scores, but is limited. He's always gets, and the score he gets on that would qualify him for the full 3,000, but because of some issues that, you know, with 4H, I'm not gonna, I think it should be knocked down a little bit. And, you know, and it's a, as Mr. Harris said, it's a, it's a tough thing, because we're pushing Jake to make money, and then we say, however, you can't charge for all these events, and you have to help them, so.
But those events is the reason we built.
Exactly.
Right, sure.
Exactly.
It's a great facility, don't get me wrong. I would like to see a little bit more transparency on the OpEx side. I'll just leave it at that.
On what side?
OpEx, operating expenses.
And that is, I mean, there's a...
Budget. Yeah, you'll see that.
It's in the budget process, I mean, it comes through the line, and Jake is, will be glad, I think, anyone that asks, will be glad to provide it in detail. Anyway, you made a motion, I'll second.
We've got a motion and a second.
You do it.
Okay, with that, call for a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Unanimous. Moving on to 1.7. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to determine whether to repair or replace the Jefferson Street sidewalk on the north side of the courthouse. Shane Evans.
Good morning, gentlemen. I guess here's what we wanna do with it. We know we gotta get it done, so maybe we wanna do the patchwork or replace the nearly 200 feet of sidewalk that...
Remind us the difference in the cost?
Uh, the patchwork, 10,000, and to the replacement, and this, mind you, this is only one bid for, for each, and the other one was 28,000 for the replacement, for the nearly 200 feet of sidewalk.
And there, and there was a problem getting other bids. I even solicited one myself.
It's a small job.
And, yeah.
So, and this is some stuff, we kinda hoped, you know, had the bond gone through, but the courthouse repairs, whatever, it was in place, but that didn't happen, so why, I don't have any money actually budgeted for that repair, so that's another thing, what can we do this, or how we do this, also finding the funds for it. So, I mean, I have it, but if I use that funds, then I'm gonna be really short in my, my courthouse repair budget before the year's out.
As I said last time, I mean, I think that it's, you know, the whole sidewalk is in bad shape, and while it's only, I guess, a hazard in two locations, I think we should fix the whole sidewalk. I think patching it is, is just, it's not responsible use of taxpayer money.
Where are you getting the money?
He's got it in his budget.
I already said he didn't have it.
Well, I have it, but you know, if I use that money now, I will, I won't have the money for any corporate repair budget.
So he really sorta doesn't have money. Nothing's earmarked for it.
I think we'll take that as a contingency.
I'll go for that.
To replace it?
I'll make a motion that we replace the sidewalk entirely. It'd have been down to, we see, 28,000.
And I'll start getting bids from other, hopefully from other, other companies.
Let me get a second. Okay.
Yeah. You know, I'm torn, I, I don't like what we've done, you know, we've been known for patching things here and there, but I've walked it with Shane, and we looked at it, and it was my opinion to do the patchwork. It's not gonna match, but basically about $18,000 difference, and that removes a lot of the, yes, aspect.
So you're not seconding?
Nope.
Okay.
Well, can, can we amend this to take bids for both?
Well, we need to make a decision, that's what, that's what, we talked about this last two weeks ago, we brought it back. It's, it's patch or replace?
I understand, well, but you can take bids on both.
I don't have a second.
That's all I'm suggesting, that we see what it's gonna cost either way, because we have rough numbers from one person that was interested. Don has stated, and Shane did too, there ain't too many people interested in doing it, a small job like that. So this goes back to what Jonathan's proposing, which is, it makes the job big enough for somebody to wanna mess with it, if you do the whole thing. So, that's where you're at with this thing. You get, you get a patch job, you save money, but you only get one bid, one person interested in it. You might get a better bid if you put it out to do the whole thing.
The one I solicited was either or, so, you know, he knew he could've replaced the whole thing, but still wasn't interested.
Still just one?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But he doesn't have a second.
I don't have a second to the motion, and we're already talking about it. Take the side for the Don.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Is that okay, Judge? Speaking as a county employee, I know there's a lot of employees that like to walk around as far as the healthy county program, which earns the county rewards in the end, I guess, if that's the right word. Tracy Sullivan can tell you more about it, but I would be in favor of replacing it, not just as a county employee, but as a taxpayer, and also because I'm handicapped, and I know repairs can break over time, and then anybody in their wheelchair or whatever, they're gonna bump around, it's not gonna be, it's, it's just kicking it down the road. I, I would say replace it, just thank you for listening.
Well, I only walk it once a year when the Halloween kids do their parade, and it's pretty bad then, little kids stumble over, fall or in.
Let me get this back on track. I'm gonna second it, just so that we've got a motion that we can, and if we're, and if it doesn't pass, then we can have another motion, but I'm in favor of replacing it, because that concrete out there has failed, and you go in and patch it, whatever caused it to fail initially is probably gonna cause it, gonna adversely affect the patch. So what we're looking at is, it is kicking the can down the road, because it's probably gonna break again, and we're gonna be back here trying to patch it again, and so I'd say let's just fix it once and for all, replacing it.
Let me explain this patch, you know, there's holes in it right now, we're not talking about just, we're some concrete over. We're talking about replacing that section completely.
Yeah.
Rather than doing the whole line.
Some sections are okay.
That, that would be okay, Judge, it's not just like filling the holes. We're gonna take out this 10-foot section or whatever and replace the hole, even though some of it might be good, it's gonna...
Right, Shane?
My recollection that there's cracks in quite a bit of that sidewalk. I mean, they'd be level, but there's, I mean, it's pretty rough.
Yeah, parts of it is crumbling.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, we've discussed and cussed, and so let's just take a vote on the replacement. That's the motion that's on the floor, is to replace it.
And motion is down to 28,000, and Shane says he's gonna get additional bids.
Okay, so I'll take 28,000. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it's 3-2, to replace. Okay, moving on to 1.8. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to authorize the Animal Services Director to reduce the annual registration fee to $1 during the annual rabies vaccination clinics being held February 4th through 18th, and also to advertise by placing a sign on the courthouse grounds. Current fees are $5 and $10 of, $5 for a neutered spade and $10 non-neuter spade. Reagan Gibbons.
Yeah, just, excuse me, this is, we've been doing this yearly for the most parts, and this is where vet clinics get together, and they're, they've increased their charge for the, for the rabies vaccination from 10 to 12 dollars, I believe, this year, but basically what I'm just asking for is to be able to reduce our registration fees, that's our, kind of our participation incentive, so to be able to get more pets registered.
I move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve reducing the annual registration fee to a dollar during the annual rabies vaccination clinic during February 4th to 18th of this year. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.9. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the request for qualifications for engineering services for the Veterans Pathway Sidewalk Project. Ms. Putnam.
Good morning. Okay, I have a, I have a few things going here for the next few items regarding the pathway project. So where we stand now, all I'm getting the engineering services is I prepare requests for qualifications. It's been reviewed by Charlie Hastings, by the county attorney, and by Grant Works, so all I'm asking on this agenda item is for you to approve the actual request for qualifications as presented.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just an RFQ, it's all on his.
Yeah.
I move we approve it.
Yeah, sure.
I second. Okay, got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's move on to item 1.10, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action authorizing the request for qualifications for engineering services pertaining to the Veterans Pathway Sidewalk Project with its allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds for engineering services to be issued on February 1, 2023, with submission due date of February 15, 2023, and authorization for the bids to be released upon receipt from the Kerr County Clerk's Office to the Kerr County Grant Administrator for distribution to the Selection Review Committee.
Okay, so I can simplify that a lot for you. First of all, they're not bids, they're actually the request for proposals, so what I'm asking from you now is to allow me to go out for the proposals for qualifications, and we have already previously approved the funding for this, and to also allow the county clerk upon receipt to give them to me, so I can distribute them to the Selection Review Committee.
Which is the next agenda item, and we'll talk about that.
Yes, but it's not, it's not a bid, so it doesn't have to be opened from the board.
Can I ask a question? Have we got anywhere with Maltinado as far as moving that path down to the western portion of their property as opposed downstream?
At this point in time, no, we have not. We have not had another meeting since we began the process for the request of qualifications, because once we get the permission to go out for, for the engineers to actually come and see the job, then at that point in time is when they will go out and survey all the work and figure out what needs to be done, and contact them, and then the committee will, should resume. And right now, we're just doing a lot of housekeeping to, for the funding.
Right. And this last week, I had, I worked the AgMec show out there at the, at the event center, and I came through there right at daylight, and there was a lady in her motorized wheelchair. It, you, it was dangerous, I mean, she could barely be seen, and she was coming up, what's that street?
Tucker.
Tucker. Again, and it was, of course, and of course, you look down that road, it's, it's all, two-thirds of it's dirt from all the traffic and stuff, you don't even see pavement, and so, you know.
The project itself is, is kinda broken out into different sections, and so when we get an engineer out there, they will, they will go with each section, including that area, and find the best route away. There's a couple of choices, there's preferable, but we have to have the engineer in order to see which one is recommended. Am I correct, Charlie, on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just wanna keep that...
There'll be an appropriate time to address that. We've heard it loud and clear, I've walked it, I think there's a path there that can be utilized, but I personally have not made contact with, with the owners of the property.
Thank you. I just wanna keep on the front burner.
So, the last one was to approve the form, so to speak, of the RFQ, and this is to authorize you to go out for the RFQ.
Yes, so I can go ahead and start advertising it and ask for the submissions and...
So the people, the public knows, the people at home. First motion, we authorize you to do an RFQ, be able to, and that's the request for qualifications, to be able to hire an engineer to start working on the proposal.
Yes.
This one is to actually do the request for proposal, and then we're gonna do the committee that's gonna review it next.
Yes.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
I'll move for approval of the agenda item.
Okay. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve getting up a request for proposal for the project. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll just state kinda for the record, I am very supportive of the Veterans Pathway Project. I'd like to see it happen. I think it'll be a great improvement for our veterans, and both in terms of safety and quality of life. So, the only part I'm not happy about is the source of funds being from ARPA. So it kinda tears me on this. I guess, you know, we've already committed $7 million roughly for the radio system, so we're pretty pregnant there. This is a relatively small amount, particularly for engineering, so I'm not overly concerned with the risk associated of anything going awry with ARPA funding, so I just kinda wanted to state that for the record.
Well, and let me clarify, 'cause I'm not sure the public understands, the ARPA funds, we were awarded $10.2 million, and we have those funds there in the bank. They came back after that, and there's a lot of concern about the strings attached. I remember you came and spoke to us. The federal government came back to us well after the, the ARPA Act itself, and said, for local governments, you can spend up to $10 million on public works without being subject to any clawback. So the 10 of the 10.2 is bulletproof, we get, we get to spend. The, the, the last two, we're gonna have to be able to make sure that it fits into what the criteria were for spending the ARPA funds. So this, this is, this is really no risk at this point, but, but I appreciate, I respect your, your opinion.
Just don't have a lot of trust for the particular executive office, that's all.
Well, they found a new box full of stuff to debate.
There you have it.
Let's trust everything that's said.
Okay, okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve putting together the request for proposal. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. But you didn't vote, right?
I said aye.
Oh, good, okay, we're good. I didn't hear it. We're good.
That's why he made us talk, he goes, he doesn't like to, but he's gonna do it.
Glad we understand.
And then, item 1.11 is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to approve the selection criteria and rating sheet for the request for qualifications.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna stop with my housekeeping on this, I promise, is this one and one more?
This is the written criteria.
Yes.
And the rating sheet.
This is the criteria that the grading committee will be scoring upon, and then also the rating sheet, specifically within that criteria, as to what they will be scoring on to select the proposals.
So we're now educated the public on the ABCs.
Yes.
How we do this. We have a motion to approve the selection criteria and rating sheet.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the selection criteria and rating sheet for the RFQ. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, item 1.12. Consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to appoint members of the Selection Review Committee to rate the proposals for the request for qualifications for the Veterans Pathway Sidewalk Project and to present the committee's recommendation for award to the court. This is the committee that makes the recommendation to us.
Yes, so I have a list here of six people, and the recommendation of the county engineer. You have full discretion as to whether to accept this or add, delete, change, whatever you want, but this is what we recommend as the people who actually score the request for qualifications upon receipt. Or to use that selection criteria that you just approved.
Okay. Are we voting on the six? Are we just voting on the fact that we're going to have a committee?
You would be actually appointing, these, these people would be appointed to be, to be them, so you would vote either on the six or make adjustments that you see fit.
Why don't you just read off the names so the public knows who they are?
Charlie Hastings, county engineer, Rich Pace's, county commissioner, precinct two, Tom Moser, county, uh, community member and former commissioner, precinct two, Beth Gibson, community member and former commissioner, precinct two, Shane Evans, our county maintenance director, and Noel Putnam, me, the county grant administrator.
Sounds like the usual suspects to me.
Yep.
The only one that I would say, part of this is to tie it into the River Trail Project, correct?
Yes, it's to tie it into the River Trail Project, and the county is taking this, this portion upon itself and not including any of the other entities that may involve as far as payment of this portion, so that's why we have kept it to county employees and a couple of community members.
But it seems to me that if we're tying it into the, the city thing, someone from the city should be on the committee.
I agree with that. It doesn't have to be six, it has to be seven people anyway to be a tiebreaker. Just add somebody.
Take as many people as you want, or as few as you want.
I just recommend that we contact, and I, I think I know who they would probably put on there, one or two people, but I think we ought to, but a, if someone does that from the city, because we're, I mean, we need to coordinate with them. We need to get it coordinated.
Now, also, if, if the street gets, if closed, gets closed, the city has to be involved in that, so.
It's the city street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The city has been involved in all the planning meetings and discussions, so they're, they're very much involved in this project.
Right.
Supportive, I don't know about the financing part.
We need to designate.
But anyway, I, I agree.
If you have, if you have a specific person to appoint, we can go ahead and appoint them, and then, and if they're able to, to serve and available, available, I don't see any reason why if they're available, they would not choose to do so. They, the city's been very supportive so far in this project.
Isn't Stewart been the one you've been meeting?
Stewart, Aaron?
Too many names, I'm not sure.
I would recommend that we, or you contact the city manager and let him designate one of his staff.
So we just make the city designate?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Because I mean, I don't.
So there'd be seven, let's do it with the city designated.
So just kind of keep that person open, a city designate.
And just contact city manager, and he can.
We, we do that all the time with the, with the shareholders. Okay. Because we've got a motion and a second? Yeah, we need a motion and a second.
Okay, I move that we approve the, the list plus the designate from the city. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the committee of seven, which includes a city designate for the Selection Review Committee. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're going to go ahead and take a break and come back at 10 o'clock.
Court is back in session. Next item on the agenda is 1.13. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to approve a certificate of construction completion for the Texas Department of Agriculture project 721-7045, the East Kerr Center Point wastewater collection project phases two and three. Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. The phase two and three contract was entered into and on the 15th day of April 2021 between Kirk County and Chromex Construction Company for the construction of first-time sewer connections for low-to-moderate income residents to connect to the East Kerr Center Point Wastewater Collection Project constructed by the Texas Water Development Board and the Texas Department Agriculture CDEF funding. This certificate of construction completion for TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, 721-7045 funded portion of the phase two and three connections under contract with Chromex certifies that all construction work associated with 721-7045, that project, has been completed as of December 22nd, 2022. And we're asking for the court to approve and authorize the judge to execute that certificate of completion. And I have Rosie Daly here with Grant Works to answer any questions that you might have. Rosie.
Good morning.
At long last, huh?
Yeah. Part one of two. Got one more to close in March or April. Any questions?
You have a motion to approve issuing the certificate of construction completion for the project phase one, phase two and three, right?
Yes, phase two and three of the 701, or 721-7045 project.
Where the lotion?
Need a motion?
I didn't hear one. I'll make the lotion.
You got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve issuing the certificate of construction completion for the East Kerr Center Point Wastewater Collection Project, phases two and three. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to hear maybe from Charlie. You know, the project Chromex is not done out there, so maybe for the public, can you kind of explain?
Absolutely.
Why are we completing this when they're still actively?
There's two funding sources that come from the Texas Department of Agriculture, 721-7045 and 721-8055, I believe is the second one. And 72045 has a completion date of December 22nd, 2022, that they had to be done with construction for that part of the funding. And they were, and this certifies that they're done. We still have 8045, or 55, which that deadline is in April, coming up in April 2023, so we'll probably be back in here in May, that following month, to do the same thing.
Good. Thank you for that. Any other questions? With that, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next item is 1.14. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to make changes, additions, and/or clarification to Kirk County subdivision and manufactured home rental community regulations. Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. As we discussed at the last commissioners' court, there's some clarifications and changes that may need to be made to the subdivision regulations. And I think that, I talked with county attorney about this on Friday, and she wanted this item to be discussed in executive session before any actions taken on.
Okay. I just wanted the public to hear that. So what we're going to do is pass this, and we're going to take that up in executive session when we complete the consideration agenda. So with that, we'll pass and move on to item 1.15. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to authorize the county clerk to advertise for bids for the 2023 road construction project. Mr. Hastings.
The 2023 road reconstruction project consists of the reconstruction of Skyline Drive, located in Center Point area precinct two. Plans and specifications have been prepared by the county engineer for the reconstruction of approximately one and a half to two miles of county maintained roads, with the focus for 2023 being Skyline Drive and Precinct Two. In 2018, the court adopted a policy to reconstruct one and a half to two miles of roadway each year below where the roads reconstructed in that timeframe. So since 2018, these are the roads we've been working on and are done. 2018, Indian Creek Road and Rimrock Road. 2019, Peterson Farm Road intersection with State Highway 27, that was a realignment. Sutherland Lane intersection with State Highway 27, another realignment. Upper Turtle Creek Road, Herman Sons Road, and Elm Pass Two Road. In 2020, Wedge Wood Lane and Wild Timber Drive. In 2021, Westway Drive, Tree Lane, Roy Street, Jonas Drive, and Low Ranch Street. And in 2022, Rancharl Road and Shepherd Rees Road. And back to that 2018, I realize we have two roads in this county named Rimrock, this is the one that was in the Curville South area. Attached is the advertisement, which shows the schedule. Got that attached for you. County engineer requests that the court, the court authorize the county clerk to advertise for bids to 2023 road reconstruction project, precinct two.
Move for approval. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve advertising for bids for the 2023 road construction project as presented. Any discussion? Questions?
I have a question. Charlie, this says advertised on January the 25th, 2023.
I'd like to do that, that's okay.
It's in precinct two?
Yes.
Deadline for that submission was Friday on the 20th at 5:00 p.m. I can try to get something in, but it's a pretty big space.
If you'll give me some revised dates, I can scratch them in here and then adjust accordingly.
I would say?
If we can do this Friday, we can do it Friday and a Friday, and that's the works.
They publish on, oh, I would have to use KDT. I was thinking Hill Country Community Journal. KDT schedule, hold on, let me get rid of this email. KDT schedule is, do they do, they do a Thursday paper, don't they?
Yes.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday.
I need something bid this week before Saturday in order to open the bids on the 13th of February.
I'll try to do KDT on the 26th, and then the journal on the 1st.
That works. Thank you.
So is the motion amended and?
Yes.
Second approved for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item 1.16. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to approve a final plat for Apache Trace and accept the letter of credit number 400692100 issued by Guadalupe Bank of Curville in the amount of $1,317,014 as a financial guarantee for the associated construction improvements. Mr. Hastings.
This proposal subdivides 503 acres off of FM 479 and precinct four into 8 residential lots ranging from five to 15 acres, and one that is 0.68 acre lot to be dedicated to the road and bridge department as a maintenance yard. That'll be directly off of FM 479. They are asking for the roads to be maintained by Kirk County, and they're willing to dedicate the 0.68 acre lot to be used as a yards for road maintenance. That's a good deal. Access to the proposed subdivision will be from FM 479. There are four proposed roads totaling approximately 16,850 feet, about 3.2 miles. The developers have indicated they will see county maintenance, as I mentioned before, and they're dedicating Lot A on that plat. It's a 0.68 acres located off of FM 479 as a road and bridge maintenance yard, and that's noted on the plat as such. The county engineer requests the court approve a final plat for Apache Trace and letter of credit number 400692100 issued by Guadalupe Bank of Curville, Texas in the amount of $1,317,014 as a financial guarantee for the associated construction improvements, precinct four.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the final plat, application for Apache Trace, and also to accept the letter of credit in the amount of $1,317,014. Any discussion?
Yes. Charlie?
Yes, sir.
So the developer has given us an undertaking that they will construct all the roads within the subdivision to the county's new standards?
Yes.
We require that at all. Okay.
Well, these are being constructed to the 2007 standards. This subdivision?
So there's no concern about taking them over, then?
No. It'll be to our standards. And our '07 standards and our brand-new standards are the same for the roads, so it's, they're good roads.
Well, I do have concerns, and we've discussed it in the future going down, you know, looking at alternative instead of the county taking them on, but this is already the works.
Correct.
And so, that's why.
Okay. Well, and because you and I have discussed it, what makes this more attractive to me to accept it for county maintenance is because they are, there is consideration, that we are getting a lot, a yard, on the west side of the county, which is very important and very valuable to us. So I'll work with the developer, and they'll do favorable sorts like that. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item 1.17. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to approve a revision of plat of Kirk Country Estates, Section Two, Lot 26.
This proposal divides Lot 26 currently 10-plus acres into two lots. Lot 26N will be five-plus acres, and Lot 26S south, north and south, will be five-plus acres also, both just barely over five acres. Frontage for both lots will be on Curville Country Drive. The lots may be served by a water system or a private well. These lots are located in Curville's ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction, but since both lots are over five acres, they're exiling from plating with the city of Curville and only need to platter through Kirk County. County engineer requests the court approve a revision of plat of Curville Country Estate, Section Two, Lot 26, Volume Four, Page 131, Precinct One.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the revision of plat of Curville Country Estates, Section Two, Lot 26. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item 1.18. Consider discuss to take appropriate action for the court to conditionally approve a revision of plat for Soladad Springs Estate, Lot 15, with the condition that the owner, developer pay all delinquent taxes and provide tax certificates. Mr. Hastings.
This proposal divides Lot 15, 7.18 acres, into two lots with a well track. Lot 15A will be 2.13 acres fronting on Gabe Road. Lot 15B will be 5.01 acres fronting on Gabe Road and Sierra Road. The well track will be 0.04 acres, and it will be accessed through a private well access unit. Before lots can be sold, the subdivision plat must be approved by the court and filed with the county clerk. The owner, developer must provide all tax certificates before the plat can be filed. We do have the plat up there, the tax cert is not attached. I've talked with Jackie, it'll remain with Jody until the tax certificates are brought in, and we're anticipating that to happen later today. The county engineer requests the court consider discuss to take appropriate action to conditionally approve a revision of plat for Soladad Springs Estates, Lot 15, with the condition that the owner, developer pay all delinquent taxes and provide tax certificates, Volume Three, Page 112, Precinct One. And I would like to add one more thing before I hear a motion, is that don't expect to see a lot more of these like this where the tax certs. We're in here with basically an application that is, can be considered incomplete. Our brand-new subdivision regulations makes it very clear, our old ones didn't, but our new ones do, that if you bring in a plat to my office, it has to have tax certificates attached to it, and if they're not, it's incomplete. I won't bring it to the court until it's a complete application. That plat, we've had it since last year, we had it before January 1. It is on the list the court approved for 2007 regulations, and the 2007 regulations are not implicitly clear that it has to be attached when you bring it to my office.
Okay. Let's get a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second to conditionally approve a revision plat for Soladad Springs Estate Lot, State's Lot 15, as presented. Any discussion?
The tax certificates, that's state law. So whether it was in the regulations or not, it was always state law.
They can't be filed unless they're attached.
Yeah.
Right. They can stay in Jody's office, but Jackie cannot file that until tax certificates are attached.
And they have to be a zero balance, and that has always been state law.
Right.
Question I have goes to the, you don't see very often, the shared well contract. Headwaters is comfortable with the shared well agreement?
Yes. Yes. That's, and they had to, in order to make them comfortable with it, they had to do what's on the plat before you, and create a separate well track for that.
Okay. Any other questions?
Did you guys somebody like to comment?
I'd just like to say?
Come up to the podium, please. Identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Joshua Rather. I'm acting on behalf of Anna Collins, which is the property owner. As soon as this gets approval, even though it's not filed yet, immediately after I leave here, I'm going to go pick up a check, and we'll be going to get the tax certificate from KISD schools, and we'll bring that over today and have it filed.
Very good.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's take a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. I move on to item 1.19. Consider discuss to take appropriate action with the commissioners' court approval regarding the general contract with interstate barricades and markings for various road striping from FY 21-22 seal-coated roads. Ms. Hoffman.
Before you, it was a striping general contract for road striping from fiscal year 21-22 seal-coated roads. These stripes were our four roads that were striped prior to applying the new chip seal last fiscal year. The county attorney has reviewed the general contract with interstate barricades and markings and told me it was good to go. At this time, I ask the commissioners' court for their approval of the general contract before you for striping on the various roads listed on those roads while in precinct one, two, and three.
Move for approval. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the general contract with interstate barricades and markings for road striping as presented. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item 1.20. Consider discuss to take appropriate action with the commissioners' court to set a public hearing regarding the proposed change of private road name Cheryl Drive South to Big Boot Hill South, Precinct Four. Ms. Hoffman.
Ashley Middleton applied through the Kerr 911 office on January 5th, 2023, to change the existing private road name of Cheryl Drive South to the new name of Boot, Big Boot Hill South. At this time, I asked the commissioners' court to set a public hearing for Monday, March 13th, 2023, at 10:00 a.m. regarding the change of private road name of Cheryl Drive South to the new private road name of Big Boot Hill South. And this is in precinct four, and I just wanted to explain on this, there is two separate property owners with this. That's Commissioner Harrison. I decided that setting a public hearing would probably be a smart thing to do on this.
I move for approval. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve changing the name from Cheryl Drive South to Big Boot Hill South, setting a public hearing for that, right?
Right.
Any discussion about it? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is Cheryl going to attend the public hearing?
We'll see.
I invited her.
Item 1.21. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to ratify and confirm the hazard mitigation grant program applications for the fire management assistant grant, FM 5420, for the county hazard mitigation plan update. Ms. Putnam.
Hello. What this one is, is to, we're doing a kind of a backup grant, I guess, for the hazard mitigation grant program that is in the process of being written on the behalf of several entities themselves. We do currently have a brick grant application out, but Grant Works is in the case that that one does not go through, that we had a deadline of January 20th for this alternate choice, so just asking for you to ratify and confirm signature as a backup grant option.
And all this is being done in collaboration with TEDOM, right?
Yes.
And they asked us to do it, and it had to be done, and there was a deadline, and I asked the boss if it was okay, so I signed it, and now we're here trying to get it confirmed. Do I do this or not?
People might be wondering what brick and TEDOM are.
TEDOM is Texas Department of Emergency Management, so it's kind of like Texas's FEMA.
And the brick grant.
The brick is a?
Building reliable infrastructure.
Which are those?
I don't know what the C in the case stands for.
It's just a C.
It's a R, not.
It's just a C, B-R-I-C.
Taxpayers need to know these things.
For counties, then.
Yeah.
C stands for county.
I move to approve the agenda items.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the, confirming the hazard mitigation grant application that's already been submitted. Any discussion? And seriously, I did ask the boss's permission to do it. Actually, she asked me if I would do it. If those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.22. Consider discuss to take appropriate action to submit the FY 22 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program reimbursement grant from the Office of Justice Programs of the U.S. Department of Justice on behalf of the Kirk County Jail and Alala County Judge DeSantis. Ms. Putnam.
We're asking permission to go ahead and do the application for the SCAP grant, because it will be fiscal year 2022, based upon, since this, the jail, it's going to be around $25,000. We don't know yet what the reimbursement will get be until we submit the application with the county jail's information, but just looking for the annual reimbursement grant. In 2020, we received $25,023, and in 2021, we received $29,200, so it will be around the same somewhere in that ballpark.
Move for approval. Second. Got a motion and a second to approve filing for these reimbursement grants as presented with the Office of Justice Program and the U.S. Department of Justice on the jail. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
We have talked about having a workshop on who's administering all these grants, and we're getting more and more of them. Can we have that on our agenda to set that workshop so we get it done?
In the next agenda item, I'm going to be giving a kind of recap of what I have been doing, and that's, one of the things I was going to discuss with you is the fact that we do want to do some sort of workshop, because I've taken over some grants that exist, I've initiated some new grants, and then I've just assisted with some current ones, they're just kind of staying there. So Jody and I have been working on some procedures as far as how we would go with this position forward, but definitely a workshop is something that, that is in the works.
Hopefully we can set it on the agenda.
And it really, yeah. Really?
I just want to make sure we set it.
So we've got a motion and a second to accept this reimbursement grant as presented. Any discussion?
Yes, I had one for the sheriff. How much does this offset actual cost percentage-wise? Got any idea?
No, not a percentage. I'd say it's small, a while, but it does help.
Yeah. Okay. I just figured it did.
So the public understands, KCSO, the sheriff's office, is actively pursuing these grants, and we're working with, through Noel to do it, so.
But it's, because it's an expense to the county, but it doesn't even come close to covering that expense.
Oh, not even close.
No.
No. Sylvia over at the jail, she ends up taking the reimbursement grant and allocating it in numerous different ways to subset some of their additional costs that they have. So she takes, she takes this money and then uses it for numerous different things. There's a list, and so she has the option of putting it where it's needed. It's, it's not a huge sum of money, but at least we're getting something back.
You can barely buy a sidewalk out here for that kind of money.
Exactly. There was a little bit help, maybe two.
Okay, let's take a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now, we've been talking about all these grants. Let's go to item 1.23, which is the annual review from the grant administrator and grant award updates from December of 2021 through January of 2023. Ms. Putnam.
Okay, so I wanted to get together with you and to let you know what I've been working on since my position's been here for about a year, and it's been extremely fluid. Everything's kind of changed. It's been a learning curve for not only myself, but the four other departments and everyone else. I know you see me all the time, but I wanted to recap exactly what I've been doing in my office, so you'd all be aware of what's happening and what kind of future plans are potentially at this point. I did give you guys a spreadsheet, and I broke it down a little bit to three different sections. The first section is just new grant funding. These would be grants that I have written for new funding, and that totaled, four grants, I've written four grants, one of which, the Feral Hog Abatement Grant, I still not, have not heard yet back from the Texas Wildlife Services.
I think that ship has probably sailed by this time.
I think it has. I did send an email to ask, but I have a feeling that by this point in time, we probably did not get awarded that grant. The other three, we did get awarded on those three, and the total for those three together was $887,200. That included the body worn camera grant at $74,660, and that gives 60, 60 body worn cameras for our commissioned officers, which would include not only the sheriff's office, but our constables, our constables and animal control services. We also had the Operation Lone Star grant, the amount of $660,000, and that is a lot of equipment. We did not get as funded, probably as much as we wanted, but across the ward, they had taken off vehicles, so that's the primary reason, wasn't quite as much. Vehicles are really hard to come by, and all those grants have been pretty much not being funded anywhere for any sort of vehicle purchases. Then we also have the bullet resistance shield grant in the amount of $152,000 plus, and that is to get the bullet resistant shields, that, which is also a big grant that's been out there right now. So those are the new grants that have been written from my office. Some of the annual grant funding or formula grant funding, the SCAP grant, which you just did, that's one of those that I've taken over from the jail, kind of assisted with a couple of them this year and getting it organized, working with Sylvia pretty closely with that one as well. I've helped some of the departments also in editing or wording or writing their grants, but not actually written it. If the county office wants to continue keeping their grants in-house, they're more than welcome to do so. If they want my services, I will help them however they want, whether it's just reviewing, editing, or it's writing or researching, whatever is needed. So we've had a couple of those. And then we also have the Endogen Defense Formula Grant, which we don't know how much that's going to be over yet, but I also kind of took that one on. It's very simple, so that one's not very difficult, but it is something we also do annually that takes it off of the auditorium staff for having to do it every year. The primary focus for me over this year is not just the grants, it's ended up being kind of some special projects, especially with this ARPA funding. But when I first hit the office, I jumped into FEMA grant. We were trying to get reimbursement from the winter storm, that was a lot of damages to the roads, $700,000 plus. Worked with the road and branch department and county engineer at length extensively to try to get reimbursement for those funds. We went over high water to try to get them, but in the end FEMA denied it. They said that we were unable to prove that the damage to the roads is caused by the winter storm, because we didn't take pictures of the roads prior to the incident, and we just don't have somebody going around taking pictures of the roads. It's not a county position, so we just did not have that evidence. So unfortunately, much to my dismay, that, that was not, that one did not go to fruition. Also worked very heavily on the countywide communication system. I worked with Grant Works and Sheriff's Office and other involved parties to make sure that we did meet the standards of the ARPA procurement requirements for the federal procurement policies, requirements, as well as what our procurement policies are, which we follow the state of Texas. I acted as a sole point of contact and orchestrated the site visits with the different entities, tried to make sure that everything was done in a way that was easily understandable by all parties, and also remained a fair and competitive bid process. And that ended up working out very well. That was also another difficult project that I, that I jumped in on, but both of those, while big, great, many experiences. And that ended up working out very well. That was also another difficult project that I jumped in on, but both of those, while big, great learning experiences and really taught me a lot. I'm very fortunate that I do have some experience from the other side of the bid process as a vendor in these same types of portals and things. So while I go in our end to see what we are requesting of people, I know what they're looking at when they go in to look. So it makes it makes these things a little bit more conceivable for me as I'm trying to do them. We also have our mitigation plan, which you also just approved, that secondary grant, just in case that doesn't go through. I've worked on that with emergency management with Doug Thomas and also with Grant Works, so they write that. We are still trying to also get the generators for the volunteer fire departments. That's another grant that I've been working on with Grant Works as well. We had the grant for court training and court appointed adult abuse and service advocates for commercial sexual exploitation with Mercy Gate Ministries. I worked with them and I drafted the MOU for that, for the county and attorney in for them in order to make sure that we are fully protected and everything runs seamlessly that way. Now I am on to the Veterans Pathway Project, which is the latest project that I'm working on. That's still the biggest one. And also I have done a little to help some other non-agencies if they need help with something, and I have some time if they're at their discretion. Judges discretion will assist them in any way I possibly can if it's not going to be too time consuming.
By that, you mean somebody that's applying for a grant, you give them some pointers?
Well, yes, like for, if for the 911, they were going out for RFP, went in another set of eyes to make sure that they did not miss any of the language or inputting, not changing the names from a template. So I just kind of quickly read through it in intro. There was there and that it was, it was done. And then I do have some agencies that I've called and ask if I've seen any grant funding out there. And I'll just keep them on. Something that will assist a nonprofit, then I will go ahead and forward it over to them to the grant announcement so they can look into it. I have not, I have not found many of those, but there has been a couple of times that I'll see something that one of our nonprofits around here could use that we would not go for as a county. And for future, we are looking into doing the workshop. I've created a few forms in order to do grant inquiries for county departments that would like to, that are either have already found an opportunity for themselves and they want to go for that grant opportunity, or they're looking for something specific. One of the things that I've found is we really need to have data. So if they're looking to start a new project, or they want to supplement their current project, I need have data. By the time the grant project comes out or the announcement, there's just a certain amount of time to write it. And if they haven't gotten their data all together, I won't have time to write it and gather their data. So a grant workshop will greatly assist in the departments knowing what they need to have to bring forth to me in order to to actually write a grant if they're looking for new funding or supplemental funding for their programs. I've sat in on numerous meetings and projects. I've got to learn a lot about different things that are happening in the county, just in case for some reason there's something I can bring forth to the table as far as grant opportunities. I've gotten to meet a lot of different people. It's been really interesting and a huge learning experience. I've enjoyed it very much. And I do have a list of departmental funding of different departments I've asked for certain things that I haven't found the funding for. A lot of people want vehicles, which there's no way to get vehicles right now. And I think that's about all that I've had going on. If you all have any questions?
This is with the workshop.
Yeah. You know, we've got a one-year history now. We didn't have a PR, I mean, a grant administrator before. Now we do, and, you know, you can see what's worked good and what needs improvement, and so that's a good reason to have a workshop.
Well, and one of the things I want to cover in the workshop, I mean, I think we all agree a workshop is going to be helpful for us on this, is for everybody to understand the process of getting Noel involved, because there is, there's a gatekeeping process. We have to approve applying for those grants. And we keep Jody as her supervisor, and they stay busy with these grants. And we're trying to have the department heads or the elected officials get approval for what they're trying to do. Then we turn her loose without everybody just bombarding her directly, trying to keep some kind of flow.
Right, declaring.
Yeah.
Another thing we need to really go over in the workshop is monitoring the grants. I mean, we apply for a lot, and all of them have very specific requirements, and that money is kind of in limbo until we fulfill the obligations of the grant.
Well, and the truth of the matter is, if we, Noel is not really the grant administrator as much as he is the grant coordinator.
Right.
And for the public out there, when we say writing grants, that's writing an application for those grants. And, and, and.
So. But I mean, it's like, you know, I don't know the reporting. If we get a $10,000 grant, well, it may cost us, there's a cost for us to administer that grant. And we need to look at the cost benefit analysis of all these grants. Some of them are a lot more reporting, some of them don't have a lot of reporting, but we need to really look at that. That needs to be part of the decision if we're going to apply for these grants. And it's great to get the apply for them. But there's a personnel side for monitoring all these grants.
Once, once we have a grant in the process, so you have me, if I'm the one writing it, you have me the one writing it, but then I no longer have access. Even if I wanted access, I don't have access, and I especially do not have access to the data to do the management portion. So you have a recording requirement, so that would fall upon the department that applied, but then at the same time, you also have the expense of the auditor. The auditor is doing all the financial reporting and also still adding additional work to her. And so the grants, the grants, while they do give a lot of money, there is still a lot of procedures that go into keeping them keeping them current and up to date and following all the procedures. And at some point, it gets off my desk where I don't have the capability of doing it, because I don't have the, I don't have the authorization to be, to be at that point in the portals or even access to the data for recording.
But first tier administrations ought to be the applicant, the department or the office that's applying for the grant. And then there are other requirements to administer these grants. And for the big grants, like the ARPA stuff and the wastewater line, all those grants that we did, we worked with Grant Works on it, Rosie. So we've gotten backup. But it is something we need to do in a workshop to make sure we've got it all mapped out.
And I don't know if the auditor, this is really more workshop thing, but you know, Scott does a lot for the sheriff's department right now. But, you know, it's a, I mean, need to make sure that all those are followed because it doesn't go back on the sheriff. It comes back on us if there's something not done right.
Well, I've got my ace in the hole. She's sitting right there.
Yeah, and something else to discuss is prioritizing, just like that hog grant. It's a very small fish compared to all these others. And how much time does she need to spend on that compared to more qualified?
Okay. So what are we going to do at work? Thank you.
Yep.
Date?
I'm waiting on my workshop. Of the road. We don't have a date for that one either.
For road.
Yeah, for the Pid.
Oh, Pid?
Yeah.
How about the 20th?
20th is fine for me.
Of this month? Of February.
And I think Heather was not available, and she wants to be here.
Who?
Heather.
Okay.
I want to say that with the leash, and I have to look. I was just coordinating calendars at this point.
Is the 6th too early? It's the morning, it'll be in the morning.
Yeah.
The afternoon, I guess. I have to go out there that afternoon.
So March 6?
March 6.
Nine o'clock. Good for the rest of y'all.
Yeah, that's what we usually do.
Yeah, Mondays.
Which one are we doing?
March 6.
Which workshop?
I'd try to both of them.
Okay, good.
Heather's here, maybe we couldn't even talk about it.
No, if we're going to do, if we're going to get into Pids and MUDs and what are we going to do?
I agree.
Do we want to have a briefing on the difference between these different districts?
Yes.
There's several different things to choose from.
I think we need to know what's available to us.
Yeah, I'd like to have somebody knowledgeable come talk to us about it.
Yes.
The only one I've looked in to is the Pid.
Yeah.
Because it specifically talks about rubens.
It seems like our friends in Medina County had offered to talk to us about it. I thought I could reconfirm.
Can you come to one of those, Bob?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
6th and 9th.
Got that. Let's move on to the next item. At long last, item 1.24, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve lease agreement for a vehicle for Constable Precinct 4.
All right, finally, Brad. We're kind of, Sheriff's Office would kind of help task to help Brad out find a vehicle. So we were able to locate a 2023 Chevy Silverado 1500 four by four. Total capitalized $76,240. His monthly payment will be 948. He has budgeted, he's already budgeted well over that for the next eight months for the lease payment. So he's actually under budget, but what he had put in his third budget.
You have.
$700 a month?
We've been working on this for what, here, Brad?
That includes the maintenance program.
A little over a year.
A little over a year.
What's it, this is, this is a lease, which means it's, it's.
It's enterprise.
How many years?
Yeah, enterprise, enterprise program. It's 48, 48 months.
We put this in the budget for him over a year ago.
I know, and he couldn't get the truck. He ordered it and called back.
We tried, tried.
I know Enterprise, they're going to be here next commissioners for 13th, 13th. They'll be down here giving an update on what it is. We had meeting last week with them, and, you know, we're slowly seeing all the, all the vehicles are starting to come in now. GMC actually did a back-to-back production, so they finished their 22s, 23s, and they started on some of their 24s. So we're starting to see them. A lot of the dealerships like Caldwell Fleet and Silsby, they're overwhelmed right now with all those fleet vehicles that are coming in. So they're pushing them out to to all the places that ordered vehicles. So we're slowly starting to see it come back up.
So this is over $50,000 before equipment is put in?
It's under 46, it's $46,000. It's under.
$46,000. What is it with equipment?
Probably close to $75,000 roughly.
So equipment.
That being, that being said, Commissioner, the camera's brand new. We just had that installed. All I had to do was just swap it up. The lights on the current truck, even though there's not enough. I did acquire a light bar that we can have installed to it to be 360 degrees. So a lot of the lighting and the camera stuff is already taken care of.
Right, you already have it.
Down the existing truck.
So it doesn't, it doesn't race to that fight, but in totally, honestly, answer your question, it would be somewhere in that value range. Once it's totally rigged up.
But it's been in that $70,000, $75,000 range for years now.
Right. Yeah.
Little equipped.
Okay.
Vehicle.
I move for approval. Second.
We've got a motion and a second to finally approve the lease for Constable Precinct 4 vehicle.
Well, we did this before. Let's hope it works this time, yeah.
Maybe it kept changing.
This, this vehicle, speaking of, it's actually out of ground at Caldwell right now, so we're just waiting for approval on the board so it'll be shipped out.
What is it again?
Oh, also authorization for the judge to sign the E document.
What, what brand is it again?
Chevy Silverado.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You finally got it, Brad.
I'm not hearing it yet. Just watch it up closer. You're right.
Count your chickens for the hat.
Next agenda item is 1.25, consider discuss to take appropriate action to accept the racial profiling report from Constable Precinct 4.
Judge, this is the annual report that is required every year.
I move for approval.
So did we accept the report? Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to accept the racial profiling report from Precinct, Constable Precinct 4. All of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thanks, Brad. 1.26, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve the Calo Foundation Challenge Grant number 2022019 donation in the amount of $150,000 to the Kerr County Sheriff's Office Equipment Fund.
Yeah, I'm looking for the court's approval to be able to accept this. And I'll kind of expand on it, especially for you, John, Commissioner Letts. One thing, I'm a big advocate of grants. Have you seen, you know, they call it free money. Well, the free part is you get, you know, you got to keep up with it. I'm going to explain to y'all some are easy. This is a very easy one. There was two qualifications for $150,000. Some are more difficult, like Operation Lone Star. I got his compliment gauge. He does a really good job. That's one of his primary functions to oversee these grants. Basically with us, we'll go out there and identify, we'll look for a grant, you know. There, one thing in our business, law enforcement, there's tons of grants. I get vendors all the time say, hey, if you looked here, I mean, there's thousands and thousands of dollars, but we have to justify what we want to give, what we're going to get out of them. Operation Lone Star, $660,000. That's a lot of money for equipment. It'd be hard for me to come to y'all and get. But there is a lot of requirements to keep up with that grant, but basically, we'll go out there, we'll identify them. We'll get with Noel. We'll see if we're going to ride him, if she's going to ride him, if we're going to do them together. I know she's busy and everybody's hot, or, you know, we have the capability to ride them ourselves. But then we'll go through her, and then once we identify and we get awarded it, then the way it works with us is, there is a lot of responsibility, and that's Scott's job, Lieutenant Kane's job to oversee that. There is, like I said, we would keep up with the requirements. But as far as the sheriff's office, you know, we're more than happy to take care of our own grants. You know, I know she can't keep up with all that. There's so many, there's so many different things you got to keep up with. This one, for example, this is one we went after with Calo Foundation, $150,000 matching grant. What are the requirements? They gave us one year to come up with $150,000, somebody to match it. We did it in two months. The second qualification is that we were a bear cap. Those are the two qualifications done. So that's why I'm here today to get y'all's approval to be able to accept this $150,000 matching grant, and we pretty much have met the two requirements.
I move for approval.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the matching grant from Calo Foundation Challenge Fund. Any discussion?
A question, Sheriff. The other $150,000, that's held by your foundation or the sheriff's foundation.
Yeah, they raised like $187,000.
And that's going to be a separate action that that's going to be donated to the county or that portion of it?
They pay directly. Yeah, and they pay directly to the vendor.
That's county equipment. Is that, I think it has to go through the court accepting it.
I guess I could go. I would check with Heather on how this transaction has to go, whether the money is donated to the county to your equipment fund, and then the county pays it. Because this money's coming into the county.
Correct.
So.
All right, we'll.
I'll just check with Heather on.
I'm sure it won't be a problem either way.
Yeah, just figure out how to do it.
You've met the criteria. Now we just have to figure out the paperwork.
Right. Good thing is we got the money.
Hard part's done.
The hard part's done.
Well, that might not have been the hardest part. Make sure the paperwork gets done.
Pass a thanks on to the Calo Foundation. Appreciate their help.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. 1.27, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve a $50 donation from a citizen for the sheriff's equipment fund.
Yes, just looking for y'all's approval to be able to accept this $50 from a citizen.
So that's approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. 1.28, consider discuss to take appropriate action to appoint Ed Story to the Emergency Services District Number 3 toward to replace Dennis Brown for a two-year term. Mr. Faces?
Yes. Basically, E S D number three has been in existence for just over a year. Dennis Brown was one of our first directors, and he was appointed for a two-year term, but for personal reasons, he has requested to step down. And we have found another member of the community who's highly respected and overqualified for this. And we have found another member of the community who's highly respected and overqualified for this. But Ed Story has accepted stepping up. And so I'm moving that we go ahead and appoint Ed Story to ESD Number Three for a two-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Ed Story to ESD Number Three. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Item 1.29, consider discuss to take appropriate action to reappoint Jeff Gannaway and Doug Hill to the Emergency District Service Number Four for a two-year term. Chris Harris?
Yes, these two gentlemen started out on one-year terms when we started the ESD Number Four. And there, that term has expired and they both want to re-up. And this will be for a two-year term now. So I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reappoint Jeff Gannaway and Doug Hill to ESD Four. Any discussion? And that's for a two-year term?
Yes.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Let's move on to item 1.30. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the contract with Hill Country Cares, Alamo County Justice Sineson. This is just up for renewal. This is Brett Ives and Kim Olden, the people over at the shelter.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to renew the contract with Hill Country Cares. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item 1.31, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve the contract with Xerox for Human Services Department. Ms. Hernandez?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner. We are requesting to go into a contract with Xerox. Currently, we are with Rico. We are requesting to go, oh, Ubiel. We're going to go with Xerox. They are a little cheaper a lot. So we are requesting to go with Xerox. Our contract is up as of this month. So we'll be going back to you guys to release the contract with Ubiel.
Has the county attorney looked at the contract yet?
Yes.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the contract with Xerox for the Human Resources Department. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 1.32, consider discuss to take appropriate action to approve the request for Kerr County pro-rate distribution of proceeds from the tobacco settlement permanent trust account. An authorized county judge to sign the name. Ms. Shelton?
Yes, this is an annual report that we follow. The Texas Department of State Health Services, and they're the ones that are distributing the tobacco settlements nights.
Move for approval. Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the pro-rated distribution for the tobacco settlement as presented. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
How much did we get this year?
This year, it was somewhere around forty thousand, fifty and somewhere forty-five.
Okay, 1.33, consider discuss to take appropriate action regarding the new county website. Ms. Morris?
Judge, Commissioner, good morning.
Good morning.
Have some good news and one little speed bump. I think we can get just for a minute here. Your county website is about ninety-seven percent complete. And has been for a little bit of time here. What we're looking at right now, as far as getting this thing out the door and finished for the public to use, is we have one particular area of shared responsibility and public notices. We have a couple of departments, still need to add a little bit of data, but not a whole lot. Overall, the county, every county department's done a very good job of getting all of their information loaded. So at this point, there is a required statutory part. We're not involved in that. We are a vendor. You have a county attorney and your structure's here. But as far as the public notices that are required and statutory, if that's a function that TAC can help with or whatever, we have one particular area that just needs to be finished out. And someone needs to be a person with responsibility over that part. So there's a lot of different departments that can come in and put in public notices that are required. It's a matter of who's going to be the key holder or the responsible party.
We need to designate some people, right?
In my opinion, sir.
Okay, Bruce, who is doing this now?
It comes from several different departments, and we just place whatever they have on them.
But it's, you're doing it primarily?
We're doing it now because they don't have access to it.
Right, but going forward, we could designate some people.
Absolutely, it should.
Where it's not all on you, like elections and stuff, give them available. Do it at, you know, ten o'clock at night or whatever time. Admin. Admin. Yeah, exactly. Every department has to have admin so they can log in administrative capacity. My question has to do with this. If we're ninety-seven percent finished, are we waiting because you're afraid that if we turn the switch now, we won't be in compliance?
At this point, I haven't gotten the go code from headquarters. As soon as we have, as soon as we're instructed to go ahead and start the process of turning it up, we will.
Who's headquarters?
I think you are, sir. All of you in the front of the room.
See, here's where we're at. If we have stuff that's required by law to be posted, and these people are dragging their heels, whoever they are, and I can speak freely because I don't have any idea who it is. And furthermore, you know I don't care. So if somebody's dragging their heels, Kelly knows. If somebody's dragging their heels, get off of that and get it done so we can turn this thing on. Because if you haven't turned in your stuff, you're who we're talking to. That's where we're at. If we have, if we turn the thing on right now, if we can, we can do it today, then some of our departments will be out of compliance. Those departments should know who they are. So we're not naming names yet. I'll be happy to name names if I had a list. Right. So we can get it going. So the point is that this website is finished. It's ready to go. The old one is not easy to deal with. So we just need those folks to get their information up to speed so we don't get in trouble. He doesn't want to get in trouble.
I heard a different thing from Clint just now. I heard him said he'd need to designate someone who's going to be responsible for it.
Those department heads are responsible for it because they know what the rules are. Jackie's department knows what her rules are. The sheriff's department knows what his rules are and on down the line. They know what they have to comply with. So if somebody's waiting because they're afraid, they're not going to be in compliance. Here's the other thing.
I've been waiting, I've been waiting for this. And no camera today.
No. My understanding is a huge part is this public notices page.
Right.
And my name has been thrown out to me in charge of that. I don't want that responsibility. That has stuff from public notices, RFQs, burn ban, I'll take that one.
Yep.
Um, rabies information. So it's hard for me, like I said, I don't want responsibility for it. I don't mind taking responsibility for the outdoor burning, anything due to burn ban, anything in Commissioner's Court, I'm good with. But to take over anything that's RFQs, RFQs, rabies, subdivision rules and regulations. I don't, and my name's the one that's been thrown out.
We throw it out all the time.
Yeah.
I know, but in this instance, I don't think I should be responsible for updating such people's information.
You shouldn't be. Department heads should be responsible for that. Rabies, you know where that goes. There's an easy example. So there's no reason for you to do that.
No.
But with the public notices page, and I don't know whose idea it was, but they didn't want all of us to have access to that page. We each have our own page. I've got Commissioner's Board, totally fine with that. But I was told they want one, maybe two people to be in charge of public notices.
Okay, as a technical question, Clint, if each department head has a notice on their page. Rabies, fire, whatever it is, can't you link that or put a page for us that we have all public notices? They automatically have a hyperlink that goes to that page?
It's not automatic. There is a unified page, one page within the site that has all public notices. Then you put the individual notices on their individual pages. And if we need to, and I think if I could just take a second, to your point, Commissioner Letts. If I said we could have a key holder, I want to get somebody who's responsible to get the thing moving to break the logjam. If we need to provide administrative access to every department head to affect change in that page, then that's the solution. But that's completely up to you, how you directly do that.
Well, Clint, okay.
I'm sorry, I have a question. I mean, to his point, sort of, is do we have to have an additional page just for public notices? Is that the law? Or can I just put my notices on my page?
I would think that would be the way to do it.
I mean, why are we fixated on having one? I get it that the public notices is easier for the public to find. It goes to public notices. But for the sake of giving administrative duties, I would like to have my notices on my page.
So the way to do that is real easy. If you have a heading that says public notices, you click on that and there's a hyperlink to every department, you're all set.
But how's the public going to know what department to go look for?
Well, here, if you, if your page says, here's all the public notices, you click on that and it has these departments. For public notices, go to this department, this department. If I'm looking for something at the clerk's office, some public notice, or if I'm looking for something in the sheriff's department, and there's just a little thing there that says, check public notices. And it has each department, and I can click on each department in a row. I go to their page versus somebody having to be the clearinghouse to put it on a page for every department. It makes more sense. It's easier. It can be built by Clint to do that.
Like you're saying, the link could have a brief description of the services we offer. County clerk, marriage records, birth, death, blah, 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 just quick, and then that link goes to my page.
Doesn't seem very public friendly to me.
Well, if, I don't really have a lot of notices. I have trustee foreclosure notices and my holiday schedule. The only thing that's required by statute is the trustee foreclosure notice. That's it. So that's why I'm saying, and those people that do that for business, for a living, they know where to find that link. They will go to my webpage.
So you're saying that Charlie has to, or engineering, excuse us, not Charlie, his department has to post all the subdivision notices then?
I'm sorry?
All the subdivision?
Regulations?
Yeah, you said the only one that you're required to do is that, the one. We do subdivision public hearings on a regular basis.
Those are all advertised in newspapers. I don't know that they even get published on one. They do.
But they could be.
They're on the public notices page. There's, there are things that by law, we are required to have on our website accessible for people to go and find. You have your legal and your local policies. And that has to be something that is easily obtainable and able for the community to find. And that's on the public notices of the current page, the future page, and all pages.
Well, Clint, let me ask you. I think I'm hearing a couple of things, and I don't want to misunderstand here, okay? And I don't make that word up, but in West Texas, we make up words.
It's on the website, sir.
One thing I'm hearing is about one page that has all public notices on it from everybody. But what I'm, I think I'm also hearing is that there are, and then, then there's each department or office has their own public notice page.
They can put public notice information on their page.
And, and do I, before we get to the general page, let's go back to the specific page, per department, per office. Do we have anybody at the county that has not gotten that page ready to go up on the website?
Those are by and large absolutely ready to go.
Okay.
There's very few, it's less than a few days at work.
So all my department heads and elected officials have gotten the necessary information to you?
That's a fair statement, yes.
Then what's the next step?
The next step, if it was, if we put setting aside the public information part, is that we need probably about ten working days or a little bit more to work with Bruce to get that transition plan to turn it up, and then we can go.
So we've got everybody cooperating. We've got the information. We just need a little bit more time to organize it and get it working.
Right, from a technical standpoint, this website was wrapped up in October. Like the technical building of it has been complete for quite some time. So it's just a matter of getting all the content loaded and presentable.
Okay, so, so that, it's been a slow process getting it completed. The last three percent is taking a long time. What do we need to do to accelerate that completion process?
I think based on what I've heard this morning, if we want to return those public disclosures or whatever back to the individual page owners and deal with the public info page at a later time, then we can do that.
Well, I'm listening to Commissioner Ballou. He understands this stuff a lot better than I do. But it's, and he used the term hyperlink. I've heard that. I don't really know how it works, but I think, I think it takes it automatically somewhere, right?
Right.
Why can't we just take whatever's posted on each one of these individual department or office public notice section and just have it automatically populate that public notice page? Is that something that can be done?
It can be done, but I think that's not worth holding up the entire slate.
Understand.
So.
So now I'm calling it, we've got to complete this hyperlink process, is that right? And that's what I'm calling it. I'm looking for some phrase. So we just got this hyperlink process. So we go ahead and open the website while still working to complete the hyperlink connection.
And back to our original conversation is that this will always be a work in progress.
I understand that.
So, you know, perfect is the enemy of good.
That goes to, I think I understand what you're saying, then I've got a question. You're saying that every department puts it on their page, but it simultaneously goes to a one page, to a public notice page?
And if they put in a new notice, it automatically goes to the general page?
Yeah, okay. But then you referred to something about there's always going to be adjustments and all, or something. Who's going to do that? Who's going to teach the county employees, department heads, when, I'll pick on Bob, I know he has, a person in his department who's going to handle it for them? But then that person retires. Well, I mean, I'm saying, it seems to me we need a website person in the county.
A webmaster.
A webmaster. Someone's got to be able to change photographs to answer questions, to help new employees, to do it. It's not a full-time position, but something we definitely need to designate someone to do it.
That's what we contracted Clint. Yes. He built the thing. He's going to be the webmaster, but he's asking how we want that to operate.
So every time there's a question, the person calls Clint and he's not going to bill us?
He'll be able to.
That last part was wrong, but the rest.
Well, I know, but I mean, you know, Clint's not cheap.
And I appreciate your point, Commissioner. We did three days of training at the Youth Events Center back in, right after Labor Day. It was fairly well attended, so there's multiple people in departments that are interested in handling that. Obviously, Bruce and his team will have keys to the kingdom as well. And part of our original pitch to the county was that we would be on a, on a small retainer every month to cover support. So overall, the way that I would look at it is you're going to have multiple people in each department and ask people retire or replace or leave or whatever. That there's just an onward we can do to help them understand. Administering an individual page, I can teach someone in about eight to ten minutes.
So back to, let me say one thing. Back to what I, my point was, is that if somebody's dragging their heels, what it sounds like instead is that people don't know that they're the designee. If something falls under your purview, then, I mean, I know that whatever's going on in Precinct One, I'm supposed to know about that. If somebody asks me a question about it, I do it. If it falls under your heading, what your responsibility is, you're the one that's supposed to tend to it. It's part of the job. Now, if it's one of those things that sounds like a gray area that Jody doesn't want to deal with, that's understandable. She has a lot to do. But other than her posting the burn ban, because we all tell her when we want the burn ban to happen. And this one might even eliminate that where we could log in and change it ourselves. So we don't have to call Jody and harass her. Anyway, so that's really what it gets down to, that division of labor thing. Okay, if it's in your department, you're responsible, irresponsible today.
And what I want to get clarified today is, and I'm going to use Noel as an example. When we hired Noel, we weren't sure exactly how this was going to work.
True.
And it's worked very well. We were pleased with the report. But it also educates us on what our additional needs are. And so what I'm looking at here is that every, I want, as county judge and the county commissioners' court, I would like for us to look to every single department head and every elected official, because that's who, that's who heads up the county, each one of them. They have the individual responsibility to get their public notice page up to speed, period. End of delegation. It stops right there. Now, if you're a department head or elected official, like I use Bob as an example, if he's got somebody designated in his office to do it, great, he's ahead of the game. If you don't have somebody designated in your office, you need to get somebody designated or do it yourself. you need to get somebody designated or do it yourself.
That's right.
And to come back and assure us it's done. And be able to tell Clint, it's all on that, that, that common page.
Right.
And once that happens, then you're in legal compliance because it's posted somewhere. And then it's just a matter of fine tuning to do this hyperlinkage and so forth that makes it more customer focused and a better product for our citizens to be able to utilize.
That's something we're going to keep tweaking as we go.
Jonathan, every time you go to a website, it'll have contact us, home, and all these other services. And then Dropbox, that's all we're talking about, having that on the front page. If it said notices and you have a Dropbox and says sheriff's department, county clerk, animal control, then you would, you'd be able to find it.
My question is that.
We, we may often end up being a coordinator.
Right.
But to start this thing off, to kick it off, I mean, for 97%, you know, let's just go ahead and push this thing over the edge here.
Right.
And say, okay, all department heads and elected officials, you're responsible, get it up.
Probably not the best choice of words, though.
Well, I understand.
Just pushing it over the edge. Let's get it across the finish line.
Better, better, better said, better said. And, 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 and we're not looking for a tattletale. We're looking for somebody that is the, the gatekeeper to let us know that we've got all gates open. That's what we want. And you're our gatekeeper.
I think we got, that notification page definitely needs to include emergency type stuff. So, you know, I don't know who your designee is out there.
We're going to have several lists.
Because Doug Thomas needs to be one. Our P R person, Lisa Walters, needs to be another one.
Sure.
That have access to, to put stuff all over the weekend, you know?
Yeah.
And what have you, can't wait till Monday. I mean, some of that stuff needs to get out, no matter what the situation is.
But what I want to clarify for, for all the county employees and the public, and make sure that we know where we are on this thing, is we're going to flip the switch to turn it on at 97%. And as, as it finishes out for those next three percent over the next 10 days or two weeks, whatever it takes, you're going to report to us if we're, have, have missing links somewhere so that we can make sure that we get to the 100% on that page. That's, that's what we want to know, is that within, we're going to open it now, and within two weeks, we're going to know it's either going to be complete or you're going to be telling us what we need to do to get it completed.
Absolutely.
Our next commissioners' court is over two weeks. It's closer to the three. But Jody, let's put it on the agenda again and see where we're at.
And that's what I understand. So you're going to create on the public notices page some way so that from every department, when they publish or put in a public notice, that notice is going to go to a single page?
I need to check on the technical aspects of that. But I think when we get where we're going, we're going to work to do something like that. I need to, right, right now, those public notices can be put on the individual pages today, and they have been since August. So they have the control, and I have that since August, to fill out that public information. It is that specific page that's the digest of all of them that has been problematic, because right now, I have to go in both places.
Well, if you, if you turn the system on at 97%, we're going to find out who's not in compliance.
Right.
And then our team will get.
And they, they need to know we're going to find out they're not in compliance and getting compliance.
We've asked pretty please for a long time. And now it's time to move forward.
I'm starting to growl.
Yes, exactly.
Well, there have been, and, and not to, there have been a number of emails that we've written and we have put together to sort of call out individual things and say, hey, last call, last call, last call. It's really time for last call.
Well, what we want you to know today is you have our undivided blessing to get this thing over the finish line.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Right.
What initiated this was a couple of weeks ago, I texted him because I spent about 30 minutes trying to find something on our old, our page now. And I said, Clint, this is frustrating, you know? And, and I probably know it better than average person on the street.
So this, we just need to get it done.
Yes.
And whoever the stragglers are, they, they will.
Let's rip the Band-Aid off.
Yep. So stragglers, hear us. Catch up.
That going to work for you, Jody?
We're not putting that on Jody's bag.
No.
Oh.
Some of it. Some of it.
We don't need a motion on this, do we?
No, not, no. Let's go ahead and do the approval agenda quickly. 2.1, or budget amendments.
Yes, we have three budget amendments in one. And two of them are less than $100, which is on grant first. And then the third one is for new revenue grant funds that are paid.
Move for approval, sir.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. 2.2, pay the bills.
Yes. Invoices for today's consideration, $1,682,990.11.
Move for approval, pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pay the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
2.3, late bills?
Yes. Today's late bills, $497,631.41.
Move for approval, second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the late bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. 2.4, auditor reports?
They're not.
And 2.5 would be the monthly reports?
Yes. For December 2022, animal control services director Reagan Givens, justice of the peace, precinct one, Misty French, precinct four, Bill Ragsdale, and county clerk Jackie J.D. Doughty. I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. 2.6, court orders.
Court order from our January 9th meeting, 397-48 to 397-65. I did give it to county clerk and we modified language on court order 397-52. It was kind of awkward the way it was reading. And I changed, or we changed it to approve and accept a $25 donation from Network for Good, which gave us the money. We gave it to be used for the sheriff's equipment fund. It just cleans it up a little bit, makes it easier to read. Motion to approve as corrected.
Got a, got a motion and a second to approve the court orders as presented and with the one revision. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Information agenda, status reports from department heads, any reports? 3.2, status reports from elected officials, any reports? 3.3, status reports from liaison commissioners.
I've got a brief one on that. Later to the airport, there's some interesting things going on towards with a flight school being established in Kerma. It's going to be a really big plus for the community, I think. Coordination, I mean, the high school already has a program. They've got almost 50 students, 25 just for first time. Anyway, to get your pilot's license. And there's, that program's being expanded under an FAA rule, which will be a big deal coming up.
Okay, I, for maintenance, rivers start in dire need of some tender loving care. Shane and I went out there last week, last Wednesday, I believe, and with Renaissance, this last weekend and the next two weekends, you know, looking at 6,000 people coming through there, there was definitely some hazards. And maintenance did some quick patchwork on, on some concrete flooring as well as some steps and some other things. And Shane and I looked at some of the buildings that are in dire need of painting. Otherwise, we're going to end up replacing wood and cost us even more. And it started to deal with everything else, you know? Some of the stuff we had in the bonds that if we don't take care of it, it's going to be a problem. And so that'll be coming up. He doesn't have money in his, in his budget for all that, but we're going to have to start chipping away at some of those things. Just wanted you to know.
Yeah. And then you mentioned maintenance. I do have one other thing. At the Little League fields, the main pump for the irrigation system and maintenance irrigation system is the original one that was put in out there years ago. It has gone down. It's no longer working, along with the valve that regulates flow of water. I met with maintenance on it, Kirk Country Pump, and also the president of K Y B S A. Anyway, the repair bill is going to be somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000 on that seven and a half horsepower pump. And that part of it is county responsibility. There's other things out there that K Y B S A will be responsible for as well.
Okay. Any other reports?
No.
Okay. Then at this point, we're going to take a brief recess and come back in executive session. And we have, we're going to do 4.1 with regard to consultation with the attorney. We're going to do 4.2A on a market adjustment on the employee issue.
So what time are you going back in?
Okay.
Come back to order. It is 12:16 and we're coming out of executive session and I'm going to call item 5.1. Action as may be required on matters discussed in executive session. So is there a motion?
You want to do 4-1-A first? 4-1-B or 4-2-A?
4.1-A, I think we took, that's the workshop. We did that in public session already, didn't we?
No, not that.
That's to set the public hearing under the, we go back to the one.
Yeah, just go 4-1-A.
I make a motion to set a public hearing for February 13th at 10:00 a.m. for the court to make changes, additions, and/or clarifications to Kirk County subdivision and manufactured home rental community regulations.
Second. Got a motion and a second to set a public hearing notice, get a notice to set a public hearing as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Now let's go to 4.2-A.
I make a motion that we make market, excuse me, payroll adjustment on the stepping grade for office manager from a 21-3 to a 21-10.
And that's in the 198? No, that's in 216.
216 and 216. And make a motion that we make a seven grade adjustment to investigator.
Investigator.
Investigator in 198 from a 25.58 to a 25.518.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You said 25.58 to 25 point?
It's a 25.
25.18.
18. I just wanted to confirm.
And these are to, we're just making corrections based on the salaries that were previously.
Corrections that were. Well, it's going to get everybody in compliance with the market adjustment policy.
Yeah, this one had slipped through the cracks.
Okay, got it.
They're, these are not pay increases to that amount that are already at this level. We just have them at the wrong seventh grade.
These are corrective adjustments.
Right.
Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.